It looks like we're ready, yeah. All right, well, call our meeting to order. Our Planning Commission Special Meeting. And we'll start with the roll call.
Commissioner Lizard?
Present.
Commissioner Freitas?
Present.
Commissioner Meyer?
Present.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
And Commissioner Benson is absent. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft, would you lead us in Pledge of Legions? Thank you. We'll move to approval of minutes for the May 8th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will move to oral communications. This is an opportunity for anyone here to speak on an item that is not on our agenda this evening. I don't see anyone on Zoom. We'll close oral communications. And we'll move to public hearing. F1, ACGC five-unit multifamily residential development design review appeal.
Chair, before we get started, I need to make a... Are we good? I need to recuse myself from this item. Because I'm disqualified pursuant to our bylaws. I own property within 500 feet and reside near the project. So I'm going to leave the room and you guys can let me know when the matter's over.
Thank you.
Hello Commissioners, I'm Associate Planner Smith and the project before you for your consideration is the ACGC five-unit multifamily residential development appeal of the design review denial. There we go. There we go. Here is a bird's eye view of the project site, which is located in the southwest quadrant of the city, two blocks east of Highway 101. The project site is located in the R2 Zone District, a medium-density multifamily residential zoning district on West Boone Street, one parcel west of the intersection of West Boone Street and Garland Street, east of Fairfield Street and north of West Long Street. The R2 Zone is meant to accommodate a variety of medium-density housing types close to commercial mixed-use areas. Here is a street view of the project site from West Boone Street looking south. And so why does this project need design review? All new buildings that are 500 square feet or more in the R2 zoning district require design review. And design review is the only discretionary permit required for this project. Design review's purpose is to ensure that street-facing facades of proposed development exhibit high-quality design, complement neighboring properties, and contribute to Eureka's distinctive identity and sense of place. The north facade of the proposed building is the only street-facing facade. The project will consist of constructing a new five-unit residential building with attached enclosed vehicle garages, one dedicated to each dwelling unit. Focusing on the north-facing facade. It includes several design features which allow the project to meet the city's objective design standards. The design includes vertical board and batten siding. The north facade includes a porch with an individual pedestrian walkway and ADA accessible ramp. Windows are accented with decorative shutters. There are variations in roof form. The one street-facing residence has a prominent entryway with a rigid window and door covering. The project complies with all existing standards of the zoning code, including exceeding objective design standards requiring a minimum of two distinct architectural features, satisfied by this development with the roof form variation I just mentioned and roof detail with articulated periodic corbels, two-story horizontal articulation, and distinct window trim. Looking at the site plan, you can see the proposed project will feature fenced backyards, both long-term indoor bicycle storage and short-term bicycle parking in the front of the building with a circle-shaped bicycle rack. Landscaping throughout the site. An ADA ramp serving the ground floor street-facing unit. A trash enclosure with a gate, seven-foot-high fencing and 12-foot-tall light. One dedicated garage for each unit providing enclosed parking. And a pedestrian walkway. In order to approve design review, two required findings for approval must be made. First, the project will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. And second, the proposed project complies with all seven of the design review criteria of Eureka Municipal Code Section 155412040 Subsection J, which are focused on surrounding context, pedestrian environment, architectural style, articulation and visual interest, materials, safety, and landscaping. There is also a section of the code, Eureka Municipal Code 155412040 Subsection I, that sets explicit limits on the scope of design review. Among other limitations, it says, "Design review is intended to address only aesthetic considerations not otherwise regulated by the zoning code." And when conducting design review, the review authority may not require a modification to a project feature that complies with mandatory development standards in the zoning code. And it gives the example that if a project complies with the minimum setback requirement, the review authority may not require an increased setback as a condition of design review approval. So on May 8th, 2024, the regularly scheduled meeting of the design review committee, a duly noticed public hearing was held for the project. The design review committee voted to deny the proposed development citing the applicant's inflexibility to work with surrounding neighbors to address neighborhood concerns, and also citing potential sunlight shading issues on an adjacent property, saying the project would be detrimental to health and safety, inconsistent with required findings. Pursuant to Eureka Municipal Code 155416030 filing and processing of appeals, any aggrieved person may submit an appeal, and the zoning code specifically states in sub-paragraph A of that section that the director, chief building official, or two city council members may appeal a decision made at a public hearing within 10 days. The Director of Development Services has appealed the design review committee's decision due to the fact that the denial is in conflict with the State Housing Accountability Act. The Housing Accountability Act, or state law California Government Code Section 65589.5, establishes that a local government may not deny, reduce the density of, or make infeasible a housing development that is consistent... A housing development that is consistent with objective local development standards like setbacks, building height, density, et cetera, as this project is. Conversely, only objective standards can be used as the basis for denying a project. The Housing Accountability Act defines an objective standard as involving no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and being uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official. In other words, it is written, quantifiable, and can two people independently look at it and come to the same conclusion. The design review's committee's reason for denying the project were not objective, and the decision is therefore in violation of state law. Eureka Municipal Code has no objective standard or any standard related to sunlight or shading effects on neighboring properties, nor are there any objective standards or any standard requiring collaboration with neighboring property owners. Although the design review committee tied their denial to written code standard that the project would be detrimental to health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to the properties or improvements in the vicinity, that written finding is subjective. Applying it involves personal judgment. The Planning Commission is today considering the aesthetic concerns of the street-facing facade against subjective design criteria and can condition the project's aesthetic design if they so choose, but based on state law, the Planning Commission cannot deny the project or condition for lower density. As outlined in the original staff report for the design review committee, staff feels the findings for approval can be made and recommends the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution conditionally approving the project. I have a suggested motion on the next slide, but I will stop screen sharing to allow for discussion.
Thank you for your report. I will bring it to Commissioners for questions for staff. Okay. It looks like pretty straightforward. We are going to open up for public comment, public hearing. Please remember, you have three minutes. This is not a conversation. You're allowed to make a statement. The Commissioners cannot respond, nor can staff. And we will hold you to the three minutes. The time will give you a little notice at 30 seconds. So please respect that. Generally, we offer the applicant first opportunity to speak. If they would like to do so, please come on up. If not, who... Excuse me, whoever would like to speak can come forward.
Yeah, so Director Kenyon, she is on Zoom. She couldn't be here in person tonight. So would you like to speak, Director Kenyon?
No, I don't have anything to add to the staff presentation. Thanks. Senior Planner Castellano.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, come forward.
My name's Raylena Crichton. I'm the Real Estate Development Director and Community Liaison for ACGC. I thought I was the applicant under this review, but Director Kenyon, yeah, not the appeal. I will comment at the end in order to address other public comments.
We appreciate you state your name and city of residence.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chuck Petty, City of Eureka, former Stark Preservation Commissioner for 27 years. As was reported in the opening review of this project, design review did find this project detrimental. The Director of Development Services was at the May 8th meeting to advise the design review committee on this project and tell them what actions they could and couldn't take. That is why I am somewhat surprised and quite dismayed that the Director of Development Services is now appealing that same decision of design review to deny the project. And I'm here tonight to strongly oppose this move to have the Planning Commission reverse the denial of this project as submitted by ACGC. ACGC has refused to even consider making changes to the project to mitigate the neighbors' concerns about this project, completely blocking their afternoon sun and lowering their property values by simply mirroring or flipping the housing unit in order for the parking to be facing their property at Boone and Garland instead of a 24.4-foot-high wall five feet from their property line, and their house isn't even five feet because it was built before setbacks. So it's seven feet from their house. That is really all the neighbors are asking. Flipping the project would then create a 25-foot setback and allow sun into their yard. The Planning Commission would have to find that the project is not detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. And that the project complies with all applicable design review criteria in 155.41204J as described in the staff report prepared for the meeting on May 8th. The trouble with that argument is that effect, the effect on the neighboring property was not included in the staff report, even though those effects have been repeatedly raised by the neighboring property owners. And City Municipal Code 155.412.040 Subsection J number one specifically states, "Surrounding context: All buildings must minimize adverse impacts on neighboring properties when possible." That's in the code. So I urge the Planning Commission to uphold the findings of the design review committee from their May 8th, 2024 meeting and not reverse this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petty.
Hello, my name's James Adam Taylor. I feel it's important to make a comment based on what Mr. Petty just said, that they could flip this and shade out the neighbors on the other side. You know, multiple neighbors who live in apartments. I think it's really important to consider not just the homeowners of our community, but the multitude of residents who are not homeowners. And in this instance, simply flipping it, as has been suggested, would actually take the light away from many more community members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. It's hard for me to be here tonight because I really humiliated myself last time. I came here to publicly state about the harassment I've been undertaking for the last two months with my family. I hope you received the message from Miles Stanley, Miles Slattery rather, stating that this appeal process will prevail because of the appeal process, and it feels very intimidating. It feels like he's tainted these proceedings for us, and I feel very nervous. I feel like we don't, it's already a done deal. In our appeal, Ms. Kenyon states the design review does not have the authority to deny unless the denial is an objective standard, including design review standards. So they do have authority according to their criteria standards, which are objective. Their criteria says, "Surrounding context," and Mr. Petty says, "All buildings must minimize adverse effects on neighboring properties." It is possible to have adverse effects on our property and ACGC's property, which we would love for that to happen. We don't want them to be in shade either by lowering the building to one level. Parking is not needed. Everyone parks, no one uses their garages, no one. So parking is really not needed, or garages are not needed there. And this is doable because Ms. Kenyon also stated on June 18th that we write our own rules for what is allowed for setbacks and heights and what they can be, not the state. When asked by council how to minimize impact on neighboring property, she states, "You can resolve with a cold, a code, or required setbacks." Ms. Kenyon also erroneously states, "The design review, Ms. Kenyon, did not identify evidence supported by quantifiable experts." We have eight realtors who are professionals in their field who have said we will lose value on our property as a negative effect. Ms. Kenyon also goes to say that there's potential shading. Come on, please. This is a 30, 29-foot building, four, seven feet from my property. Of course, there's going to be shading. The California Health and Safety Code HSC 17920.3 says that when dampness or visible mold is in a home, it's a hazard to health. I have an immune-compromised child who sleeps on that western wall. She will be affected greatly and dangerously by dampness. The design review board is made up of professionals. There's one right here. He is a professional in his field. He's an expert in his field. That is why he is on that board. The National Survey of Lead and Allergens in Housing states, and I have sent you these surveys, "Gather quantifiable written expert evidence showing dampness and mold affects our health. Dampness causes mold to grow. Mold spores float through the air and land on wet and damp surfaces. When they cannot dry out, like my foundation, will not be able to dry out. I have an earthen, I have an earthen foundation. I would not be able to dry out. Mold will grow up into my, up into my wooden structure, and mold can grow within 24 hours after dampness." Mold... I'm asking you, please, to deny this on the health of my family and send it to City Council if you are not brave enough to do that yourself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Reed, the co-owner of 709 West Boone Street, and I'm here to voice my safety concern that was brought to me to attention by a retired fire inspector. I carry expensive fire insurance due to our 132-year-old Redwood Victorian home. On Boone Street, we have a double-door access, which is our north side, and a single-gate access on Garland Street, which is our east side. We have, we have no overgrown vegetation touching our home and take great care in maintaining safety. This issue is on, the issue is on our west side, where we have always used the lot as an easement for safety and maintenance. Our house lies on the property line. The issue, per the inspector, is because our house lies on the property line. Firefighters need to have at least 10 feet minimum access in order to do their work putting out a structure fire, which means the proposed five-plex would block that access. According to the article in the North Coast Journal, "The Humboldt Bay Fire Department is in critical staffing shortage with only five firefighters who are able to do mandatory overtime. Their response time now is less than three minutes, three-minute delays, excuse me. For our Victorian, time is crucial, and access along the property line we share with ACGC is the only way to ensure our home has a chance. To deny our property equal fire protection is a serious safety issue." And the Humboldt Grand Jury issued a statement reporting that dwindling resources equal dwindling services. Knowing this, and knowing we had easement access on the west side of our property, the city has an obligation to do everything to keep my family safe. By putting the driveway along our shared property lines would satisfy us, our insurance company, and in turn provide more protection for the ACGC tenants. And furthermore, since my family sleeps on the western side of the home and having access out our bedroom windows is crucial to our safety. The Eureka Building Code says that emergency escapes and rescue openings residents should have a 10-foot-wide escape route. Any street, alley, or parcel of land outside air leading to a public street has been deemed a dedicated or otherwise permanently appropriated for the public use and has clear, needs clear height spans of 10 feet. This is crucial to the livesafety, and we plead that you require the design to be flipped to a safe access in accessible driveway in between our shared properties to ensure my children and us have adequate exit from our bedroom in case of a fire. This is an easy way for the City of Eureka to eliminate any liability in a chance my family is trapped in a burning building and not rescued because we have four foot between our home and western property lines. And thank you. This is just a major concern for us. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing any hands on Zoom. No?
Hello, my name is Steven Liu. I'm a resident in the City of Eureka in the Myrtle Town area, and I'm here to voice my support for this project. This project I see feels a lot of, fits the intended zoning of this property. It fills the need that we have as a community for more housing units. In the past, I've worked in the development world. I've been an engineer that did residential property design, and I can attest to the immense amount of challenge a developer goes through in finding a proper site for development and then going through the design process and fitting all of the required parking and other amenities that are driven, also code-driven, to fit all that on a piece of property. And it is within, I would like to, you know, I don't want to speak on behalf of developer. I don't have any relationship with them, but it is very, very difficult to commit funds to do, to even to get to this point. And it took, I have to imagine it took a lot of time and effort and energy to achieve this design, and we need it. We need, we need the housing units. And any of these, and I understand the concerns with the neighbors, and if there are life safety issues, that's handled through the building permitting process that goes through all those aspects. So if there are minor adjustments, that will be, that would be handled through that process. But we, we need to, as a community, take a stand and say, yes, in my backyard, we need the housing. We need the, the development. We need the funds. We need this positive, you know, the number of jobs this is creating in the construction realm, in the real estate realm, in the design professional realm. We need to support this kind of development in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to speak, you're free to walk up. Yeah.
My name is Midge Catching. I'm just a citizen of Eureka. I walked up with her and looked at this piece of property and looked at the house next to it and listened to their comments at the design review committee. And what I will say is, they seem to have a great deal of concern about the shade, that this is casting on their property, but they have a hedge around their house that is over 20 feet tall in quite a few areas, and I don't think in any spot is it less than 16 feet. The side of the house that would be facing this building has three small windows on it, period. The earthen basement that they're talking about is, I am certain crawl space. I have one just like it at my wooden house. I have a sump pump sitting in it because it fills up with water. My neighbors have sump pumps in theirs because it fills up with water. I think their concern about shade from this is a little overstated. Let me just put it that way, given the size of the private hedge around this building. Also, if we deny this, this is something that is going to come up again and again and again. Everybody's got reasons why they don't want something built next to them. And if we allow this to be denied, this is going to set a very bad precedent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Raylena Crichton. I work as the Real Estate Development Director and Community Liaison for ACGC. Briefly, I will just kind of talk about some of the design, or the influences that created this design. So this project follows the local zoning, so it can be a by-right development. And so in this infill project, we're required to have at least one parking space, which necessitated the garages. Side setbacks are five feet, and then drive aisles are minimum 20 feet. So these requirements are the most impactful in the design, the layout, the configuration, and the orientation. And while it is possible to ask for exemptions in established zoning, it puts that much more of a tax in the form of time and monetary investment to the project. So to ensure that these apartments are accessible to working professionals and maintain a high level of quality, this project does follow the city's established planning and zoning codes in every way. At this point, we're a year into the design process, and we are, you know, losing our season in order to actually construct these homes. We would ask that you approve this project without any required changes. We anticipate construction to take about seven months and have the new apartments ready to rent in 2025. Since ACGC has started into residential development, we've completed 30 different residential units, all infill development, in the past nine years to help contribute to the planning, or the city's planning and... um, in the past nine years to help contribute to the planning, or the city's planning and, and zoning, you know, in order to meet RENA goals, in order to better our community. So I appreciate your consideration and thank you.
May I ask a quick question? Yes, is that okay?
Um, maybe we should close the public comment and then you could, would you be willing to ask questions during our discussion after a motion?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Chuck Ellsworth. I live in the Bridge District and, uh, I can't think of anything to say that would embellish better than what Chuck Petty said. And, um, I would encourage you folks to approve this project with the, um, with the idea to flip the project so that it would accommodate the neighbors. Those folks, um, they're really not against the project. They just would like to see the project mirrored so that it would work with their needs. And the, the developer and the city, it seems, has been, um, really heavy-handed and iron-fisted with this project. And compromise would allow you folks to approve it and get, get on with the project. The project is a good-looking project. It just needs to be flipped. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
I'm not seeing any hands.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to commissioners for a motion and discussion.
I did have a couple of questions, one for the applicant and one for staff.
If we start with the motion first, then we could start into some questioning. So we just need someone to make a motion. And we could certainly change that motion or...
For the purposes of this discussion, I'll, I'll make the suggested motion. I move the Planning Commission adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from CEQA and reversing the Design Review Committee's denial of the project and conditionally approving the ACGC five-unit multifamily residential development of APN 008022028.
I'll second. Thank you for your pause. Commissioner Freitas?
Yeah, for sure. So I know the applicant spoke to some of the design considerations. But it sounds like there is the potential that flipping the building would also impact other residents. Is that the rationale for choosing the design? Or were there other reasons as well? Thank you.
That's exactly it. Um, so to the other side of the property, there's another multifamily development where I think there's either five to seven families who face that side. So, um, you know, given the constraints that we have, it is a narrow parcel. And with a third of it that has to be taken up by a drive aisle for fire truck turnaround, um, vehicle access, it was less of an impact to move the part, the project closer to the single-family home rather than essentially creating a tunnel between two multifamily units who would only have one viewpoint of each other's windows. So, um, to be considerate to everyone in the neighborhood and make less of an impact for more families, this is how we chose to orient the project.
That's helpful. Thank you. And then my, um, other question was for staff. In terms of fire, a 10-foot fire separation, as one of the other commenters said, that would likely be something that would be discussed when the building permit went through building and fire. But, um, could one of the planners or the building officials speak to that? And whether or not they see that as being an issue with this project?
I don't see a building official on the, at the meeting today. I know that when we would process... Brendan here? No, okay. I know that when we would process the building permit, building and fire would both get their eyes on the plan set and determine that, you know, determine whether or not it was compliant with those standards in the building code. Um, it's my understanding that a five-foot setback, uh, is compliant. I think that's, there is a minimum distance between buildings that is required. Um, I, I don't know exactly what, how far the existing single-family residence at 709 is setback. They indicate that it's four feet. So right now, um, it's my understanding the buildings would be about nine feet apart.
Um, I know just a little bit, uh, that, yeah, that's the, they meet the mandatory five-foot setback and to get that 10, that 10-foot can be reduced with like firewalls. So during the building permit phase, um, if they need to add firewalls to that side because it's less than 10 feet between the structures, that would happen at the building permit phase. But we wouldn't be analyzing firewalls right now.
So to clarify though, the current applicant would be required by the fire department, if it was necessary to put in firewalls, that would be their responsibility?
Correct. Yeah, the fire department reviews all the building permit applications.
Okay, thank you.
I had, um, an ex parte communication with, with staff about, uh, both of, uh, the projects up for, or all three of the projects up for consideration tonight. Um, I was interested in particular in, um, because we are limited to objective standards. Was there an objective standard? Is there an objective or legally accepted standard for what materially, materially injurious is? Which I think is the spot where the, uh, existing homeowners have, have their best argument. And, um, a city attorney, uh, through Director Kenyon came back to me to say they had looked at the case law, um, did not find, um, and at the common law. They see various references, or sorry, the regulatory law, the legislation. They see various references to materially injurious, but it's all using this language from various city codes. So, um, short summary, there is not an objective standard. So, um, you know, I'm finding myself here not seeing, um, objective criteria on which to deny this, well, to uphold the denial, I guess is the right way to say it. You know, I, I, I think our role here is relatively narrow to try to understand the code and the state law and apply them. So while I might have personal feelings about flipping the property or other things, I'm not, I'm not seeing anything to hang a hat on here.
I think you're exactly right. I think this comes up from time to time that, um, we're kind of stuck in a position where we have the code and the bylaws that we have to adhere to. And it's not always maybe in the neighborhood's best interest in ways, but, um, we definitely have our purview of the scope of this project. It's always disappointing if a developer isn't willing to work with their neighbors, but it sounds to me like that they've gone through some of that processes and it's not possible. So I agree with you.
Yeah, I feel prepared to approve this project. That being said, I feel like this is one of those cases where more than one thing can be true at the same time. It seems like the developer followed all of our rules and in fact could have made an even larger building and was well within our objective standards. I think it's also true that it will have an impact to neighboring properties. And, you know, I would like just to note that I did watch the Design Review Committee meeting and I hear what is being communicated by the neighbors about pouring their heart and soul into their home and it being emotional. And I hear also that they're not against the development and that they don't think it will be bad for the neighborhood in terms of new neighbors, um, and multifamily housing. So I think that sometimes when the state streamlines and limits our ability to deny projects, they do it for really large cumulative reasons. And sometimes at the really granular level, it can be kind of ugly. But I think that this is sort of the direction our community needs to go. And I, like I said, I'm ready to approve this project.
Well, if we're finished with discussion, I can call for a vote. Commissioner Craft?
Aye.
Commissioner Freitas? Aye. The motion carries. All right, we will move next to F2 Schneider RV Park Project.
Okay, great. I will be presenting. Thank you.
Is Commissioner Lazar coming back in?
Oh. Yeah. Yes.
Good looking out, Kristen.
Just let me know when you're ready. Okay. All right, Caitlin Castellano, Senior Planner, assigned to this project. Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight I am presenting to you the Schneider RV Park Project on the northern Eureka waterfront. Um, I do want to point out that, um, today you are evaluating not the merits of the use at this site as the City Council has already approved a disposition and development agreement to develop an RV park at this site. So really, um, what we are reviewing tonight is like the operation and the site layout, but not the, and how the use will operate there. So. And I will, uh, provide more background information on that. Okay. So here's a Google, uh, map of the project area. The red outline is the, um, implicated land in the project. Yellow star is the location of the RV park, uh, proposed RV park. As you can see, the project is located in the northern portion of the city adjacent to the waterfront and the Samoa Bridge on Highway 255. Old Town is located to the west and Woodley Island and Tulaa Island are located to the northwest. Zooming in here, we can see the proposed, um, RV project site, which is how it will be configured after an associated lot line adjustment and street vacation of portions of S and Front Street are completed as well as a merger. Uh, this will ensure that the RV park use, um, is located, and all of its improvements are located on one contiguous parcel. So the RV park is bound by the Samoa Bridge to the west, uh, T Street and a vacant parcel depicted by the star in the east, Waterfront Drive to the south, and the Waterfront Trail in Humboldt Bay, uh, to the north with the Waterfront Trail depicted by the broken blue line. And I know it's not perfect alignment on here, but it was good enough. Uh, access to the RV park would be via Front Street, uh, from T Street. And here is First Street and here's Highway 101, um, Fourth and Fifth Streets, which are located several blocks to the south. So there's a detailed background section in the staff report, so I'm briefly going to go over the site's history and how we got here. Uh, there is a long history of redevelopment proposals in this area and cleanup activities due to the project's site historically being used as a lumber mill and a foundry. Uh, cleanup of the environmental contamination was completed in 2013. Uh, this property was also formerly owned by the Eureka Redevelopment Agency. Uh, and then, uh, the state of California eliminated all redevelopment agencies in 2012 throughout the state. So as part of that dissolution process, uh, the city prepared a long-range property management plan, which was approved in 2015. And it outlined how the redevelopment agency properties that got transferred back to the city after the redevelopment agency was eliminated, uh, would be used and disposed of. And it had to be consistent with the previous goals of the redevelopment plans for these properties. So as a result of the property being on the local, uh, sorry, the property management plan, the city released a request for qualifications for visitor-serving and recreational development proposals in 2017. Uh, then shortly after the RFQ, which is Request for Qualifications, sorry, was awarded to the developer, um, for the RV park on the east side of the bridge and then for a future mixed-use commercial residential development on the west side of the bridge. So that would be closer to Halverson Park. Uh, historic fill from wetland restoration near Target for the Waterfront Trail was spread on the project's site in 2017, which raised its elevation by approximately one foot. Um, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was adopted for a larger project that included the RV park in 2019. Um, some of the other components of that larger project was improvements under the Samoa Bridge, including improvements to the parking lot, um, and an additional floating dock, uh, next to the existing one. Uh, and then, let's see, and then after the environmental document was adopted, that's when the disposition and development agreement was approved by City Council in 2020 to do this project. And so the, for this project, the RV park and then for the future mixed-use development, the west side, as I previously said. So both of the projects require separate permitting and the RV park is proceeding first. So the applicant, or the developer who is the applicant, uh, is Travis Schneider and he proposes to construct, uh, the RV park. This is the site plan with approximately 32 RV spaces. Two of them will be ADA compliant and all of them will have, uh, associated utilities and hookups. 29 parking spaces, one will be ADA compliant. A walk-in tent camping area, you see at the green triangle. Uh, a 2,000-square-foot office with a restroom here. You can see it's a two-stall unisex restroom closer to the bridge. Uh, three trash enclosures, an underground dump station, outdoor lighting, lighting and landscaping that I'm not showing here, but they are included in your report and the attached plans. No fencing is proposed at this time. And as I said before, vehicle access is proposed from Front Street, uh, via T Street. There, here's the existing two-parameter wetland that's already been delineated on the site. Uh, here's the existing Waterfront Trail and as part of this project, um, a 10-foot easement on the northern boundary will be, uh, is a condition, will be dedicated as a condition of approval. There, a long time ago, when Halverson Park and this trail first went in, uh, these, there was an offer to dedicate the easement, but no one accepted it. So now we're coming back and actually going to record that easement as part of this project. Uh, there's also existing vertical access trail. You see there in yellow. Uh, it's five foot wide. It ends at Front Street right now. It will get improved. It'll get widened to 10 feet and then connected to Front Street or to Waterfront Drive via Front and T Street. The alignment is going to be different than what you see here as the city preferred to have the trail within the right-of-way and not on the private property. As you can see, because the, especially the northern part of Front Street, that's not owned by the applicant or the, this developer or the city. Um, as for operations, the RV park will be strictly for short-term use. Um, per the developer, the RV park will operate 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, with up to five employees. The developer also proposes to raise the elevation of the project site by one to two feet, except of course along the northern edge of the site, um, where the wetland is, as well as the proposed stormwater detention basins, uh, to a finished grade of approximately 12 feet. And all structures will have a finished floor elevation of at least 15.34 feet. That is North American datum, something 88. Uh, ground disturbing activities are expected for utility trenching, foundation work, paving, landscaping, and for the creation of a stormwater detention basis. So permit requirements, uh, the site is in the coastal zone. As you can see here, the, the red, it's in the waterfront commercial zoning district. Surrounding it, the, the red to the south, that's a service commercial zoning district. The gold and yellow is office residential. The bright blue is actually public and that's... The bright blue is actually Public, and that's really just the roadway. The purple and blue are like Water Resources, and then the awkward greenish-brown is Natural Resources zoning. So RV parks are conditional use in the Waterfront Commercial Zoning District, so it will need a conditional use permit. And also, there are additional design standards for RV parks in our zoning code. The RV park is also considered development, so it requires a coastal development permit. It's also in the coastal design review area, so it needs design review. And our coastal zoning code says the highest review authority would act on all the permits. So that's why we are here at the Planning Commission, because you would act on the use permit and the coastal development permit and design review, instead of it going to separate hearings. The project's site also requires a lot line adjustment, street vacation, and merger, which I'll discuss in the next presentation in the, that you have a second staff report for. And like I said before, SEQA was completed in 2019 as part of the larger project. So there are 22 conditions of approval, and those 22 conditions actually have a lot of subconditions. So there's a lot of, there was a lot of thought going into this to make sure it complied with all of our regulations, as well as the policies of the local coastal program. Notable conditions are the street vacation, lot line adjustment, and merger must be completed prior to, to create the one project site, prior to issuing any building permits. For construction of the RV park, overnight stays are limited to 30 days or less. Park models are prohibited, and occupants may not make any exterior improvements to the RV or camping sites, including hot tubs, fences, et cetera, for the life of the project. This is, so it doesn't turn into permanent housing. This condition was drafted after talking with coastal commission staff. For ground disturbing activities, the developer will need to adhere to all recommendations in the R2 soils report, which was attached to the staff report. They'll need to implement the soil and groundwater management plan in case there's any residual contamination that remains on-site, since it was previously cleaned up. And that is a requirement of the water board. They'll need to obtain a Wiat tribal monitor. The developer will also need to provide information on the source of fill prior to bringing it to the site, to ensure it's clean. Public utilities related to potable water, stormwater, sanitary sewer will be improved per Public Works Engineering specifications. Also, a public improvement plan to the satisfaction of Public Works Engineering for vehicle and pedestrian improvements on Front Street, between the RV park entrance and T Street, on T Street, between Waterfront Drive and Front Street, as well as the existing vertical public access trail, so it connects from Waterfront Drive where, to the Waterfront Trail, where it currently ends on Front Street. And as I briefly touched on, we are gonna, we have condition to realign that trail extension to be within the right-of-way instead of the private properties. And then a description of what those improvements would look like is in the conditions of approval. The, I think I mentioned this earlier already. The developer will record a 10-foot-wide easement over the northern boundary for the Waterfront Trail. There are certain landscaping requirements in the camping area versus within the 50 feet of the northern boundary in the on-site wetland, where landscaping within the wetlands shall be enhanced per California Department of Fish and Wildlife's recommendations during the referral process. And a landscape plan for landscaping within the 50-foot buffer of the northern boundary is conditioned to be reviewed and approved by the Wiat tribe as this, the area will act as a screen for sensitive viewers at Tullawa Island. Let's see, no future shoreline protection will be allowed as, at the project's site. It is located in a flood hazard area, and the RV park is not a coastal-dependent use that would be entitled to additional armoring. So the RV park is transient in nature, so improvements will be able to be removed in the future if it's affected by flooding and sea level rise. Also, a tsunami safety plan is required. They'll also need to adhere to applicable mitigation measures from the 2019 environmental document related to construction impacts like noise, air quality, erosion control post-construction, sorry, impacts like on-site stormwater. It all has to be, if it falls on there, it has to be retained on-site and infiltrated, noise, lighting. Yeah, so as all of the required findings to approve the use permit and the coastal development permit and design review are included in the staff report. And for these reasons presented today and included, staff recommends that you hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution conditionally approving the use permit, the coastal development permit and design review for the Schneider RV Park project. I do see the developer, Travis Schneider, is on Zoom, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. I have just one quick question. I have seen this project before on the Planning Commission. Did we not issue a conditional use permit at that time?
No, at the time, it was just the environmental document. I am not quite sure on the history of why they, they said at the time that the use permit and the CDP and the street vacation and the design review would come later. That's why you see the 2019 numbers. I'm not sure what the delay was, but yeah, it did come before you.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
I have several probably quick ones. You went, you went through a number of conditions and referenced agencies there. Any, anything come back from agencies worth reporting that you didn't cover in conditions?
No, I mean, the, the soil and groundwater management plan, and, you know, following the Humboldt County LID manual, you know, capturing all stormwater and filtering it on-site, that was reinforced by the water board, staff, regional water board, as well as Public Works Engineering. Yeah, CDFW was really concerned about the on-site wetlands. The Wiat Tribe was most concerned about the landscaping there for the visual barrier.
Did these consultations happen?
Well, we sent out new project referrals as part of, right now, yeah. I think it went out late November of 2023, December 2023. So the, all these comments that, that are not related directly to the environmental document, because I know the staff report had a lot of information about the mitigation measures, but all of that was new comments, if it wasn't.
And I mentally stepped out for the, like, two seconds that you said how large that wetlands area it was?
It's about 2,000 square feet. I'm not sure if I said the size, but yeah, it's a two-parameter.
I thought I heard two acres, and I was pretty sure.
Oh, no.
That was my brain misfiring.
Comments? There's mention about comments from the Humboldt Transit Authority.
Oh.
Can you speak to those and summarize the requests?
Yeah, so it's my understanding, so that, and I actually didn't send them over. Another staff person did, and then I kind of took it over. Is that they had requested the city consider putting more transit stops next to it, because right now there's one bus route that does go by the project's site, but it's only a one-way, and the bus stop one is closer to the Adoree Center, and the next one is like on First Street. So that has been forwarded to Public Works for consideration. But as far as like adding bus stops right now as part of that project, that's not being conditioned or, right now.
Is it staff's belief that it could still be brokered by Public Works as part of the overall project implementation, if necessary?
I would think if there's a need, yeah.
Okay. My other question has to do with the enforcement of the 30-day stay. So I, I understand that the developer will have a policy, but what kind of teeth or backup will there be that that actually happens? I mean, I, I think my biggest concern is that this turns into something longer term through neglect.
Yeah, that's a really good question. I'm, I'm not exactly sure how that looks, but, you know, working in planning and working with code enforcement, I'm sure it's a complaint basis. So if there's, you know, there is a bluff, there are, you know, properties overlooking it. There are people on the Waterfront Trail, maybe one of the neighbors, if they're watching, and they see someone, you know, the same trailer there or something going on. You know, they certainly can contact the city and code enforcement. We'd look into it, and if they were in violation of that condition and it wasn't fixed, then it could go through the permit revocation process, you know, at a notice public hearing.
Through the chair, do you mind if I ask the Mr. Schneider about that?
That would be okay with me if the applicant's willing to answer the question.
Mr. Schneider, what, how do you see managing that part? The enforcement of the short-term rental nature of this?
Yeah. Derek, is he able to unmute himself? Okay, there he goes.
Are you guys there?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. I, I was trying to click through, but apparently I don't have authority. So in terms of the short-term stay, we are 100% in favor of the short-term stay, in large part because it's more advantageous to our operations to cycle people through on a short-term basis than to have long-term tenants. Primary benefit is financial, in the sense that the rates are considerably higher for short-term stays versus long-term stays. So it's not been an issue with our other park in Eureka. We, we run a, a pretty tight ship there. It is, we have stays that are permissible up to six months at that park, so it's a little bit different. But we consider this park to be a nice complementary park to our operations on the other side of the 101.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So it sounds like from the city's perspective, it's kind of the normal complaint-driven process then? Okay. And Mr. Schneider's response makes sense to me. All right, I'm, I'm done.
I guess I'll ask about the use question. So you said at the beginning of your presentation that the use was not part of our discussion tonight or part of what we were being asked to approve. Is that right?
It's how the use would be operated, correct? There, the city and the developer have a disposition and development agreement to construct this RV. So the City Council has essentially already approved the RV use at this site.
I do think that we did, as the Planning Commission, approve that as well and probably sent that on.
It was the environmental document for it, but yeah, I mean, sometimes.
But I recall we chatted about this extended stay. We chatted about the fence. We had conversations about all those things.
Yeah, that was before my time. I did watch the meeting, though, online from when the environmental document came forward. But yeah, it's my understanding that, I mean, if you denied the RV park and the use, you know, I'm sure it would just go up to council. I mean, they, so really, you know, what, what we're here for is how the use would be operated, not whether it's appropriate for this site.
Well, it seems kind of academic, but I mean, I, you mentioned later in your staff report and also in the documents we received, the written staff report, it's a use that requires a use permit. And we don't have a use permit. So we're approving a use permit. Should we take action tonight on it? So we are, in some ways, approving the use, but it's kind of a semantics thing. I think the main thing is that this is a collaboration between a private owner and a city. There's a lot line adjustment, land will be exchanged, and a use is being, you know, brought forward for approval that will, that the council has signaled they want to see happen at the site. We're just getting into the details of it. So I think both are true. It's just a little confusing. So we received comments, and I reached out to staff earlier today. We received comments at noon, I think, that were largely in concern drainage. And I guess I wanted to ask Caitlin or any members of staff that can speak to that specifically. I got a response via email talking about some of the conditions specific to storm drain possibility that could address some of the concerns we heard. But I think for the public's benefit and also the other commissioners, I'd like to get some more precision on that.
Yeah, I can certainly start to address them. And we do have the Public Works Director, Brian Groving, here that can provide clarification. So as part of the site improvements, as part of actually constructing the RV park, as well as the street improvements, you know, the, the streets, the front and T Street will be constructed not to, I'm not sure what the, how to explain the, the level of construction the street will have, but it will be paved. It will have a curb. It'll have a curb to separate the trail from the drive aisles. I believe there will be some on-stripe parking. And as part of that, there, the, you know, whatever water falls on the new street will have to be directed to a storm drain or to on-site LID features. We, you know, we have to follow the new state, it's not really new, but the Humboldt County Low Impact Development Manual, which is the stormwater manual for addressing stormwater impacts. But yeah, Director Groving, would you mind, you have anything to add? So the project will help with some flooding in this area, but it won't address like off-site flooding that comes from off-site to here.
I think everything that Senior Planner Castellano has said is accurate. All of the on-site drainage will have to accommodate the, you know, the water that's generated on-site or that falls on-site, and that will have to be treated and retained and, you know, before being discharged. The improvements to Front and T Streets will require improvement plans that are reviewed and approved by the Engineering Division of Public Works to ensure that we're not making any drain, existing drainage deficiencies worse. And we should be able to improve the situation by directing those flows to better locations.
And to the point we were talking about earlier about the bus stop, is that likely to be something that could emerge during the improvement?
Yeah, it likely is. A bus stop on most city streets is as simple as putting up a sign, designating it. And sometimes there's an enclosure, and sometimes there's not. So it's, it's a straightforward process, and I think that could easily be accommodated.
And then it also says that, you know, a storm drain may be required. I see in Part F of the improvement plan, section of the conditions, across the newly merged parcels connecting to the storm drain. Is that kind of fair to say that might be a component?
It, it could be. We have to look closer at existing grades, what the grades are going to be after additional fills brought into the site, and where that drainage can go.
And I guess I just, since we're talking drainage, I did visit the property just before our meeting tonight. And I looked at the area that was, you know, reevaluated for wetlands, and it's pretty wet. I guess I'm just curious to get staff's take on those conditions and, you know, because there were, I think it's safe to say this whole area was wetlands 150 years ago. So it's not surprising to see wetland plants and things coming in and colonizing the areas that are now fairly saturated. But I guess, is that, do you feel like that drainage situation is a result of a water main break and, and kind of?
There, there was an existing low spot or depression, and it was aggravated by a water main break. And it was very difficult to get a good positive shutdown of that main break. So it was seeping by passing for quite some time and allowed, I'm sure, some vegetation to establish that otherwise wouldn't have.
Okay. Thanks.
Further questions for staff before we open up for a public hearing? No. Okay, we will open for a public hearing. As a reminder, you have three minutes. Please state your name and city of residence.
I did want to point out, sorry, that you guys did receive a hard copy of additional comments that came in this afternoon at like 3 o'clock.
Thank you. No, it's okay.
Stan Stamps, 2125 First Street down in Eureka. This house, 1949, when my parents, grandparents, or, and it, ever see the, since the railroad rolled up, there's no been any, any, anything to do, anything that there. The water comes down from two, T Street down to X. The water, when the other street comes in, and the water, it's all over. There's no place to go. And you get down to the T Street, it has no place, any where to go. So since the railroad just walked out, you know, forever, and it's, it's, everything's stale. Now we got the bay coming up in a couple, two or three feet in, you know, in the last water, and then everything's up and a lot of water coming out. And so no, so we hope we can get something done.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sari Baker.
Hi, my name is, uh, Sari Baker. I live at seventeen thirty-nine Third Street. And, um, I just had a question about the egress into the park. It looks like it's just going to be off of Front Street and it's going to be one way in and one way out. Um, and I was just hoping for a little more clarity on that. I would also like to suggest that considering the neighborhood and the area, um, I don't know if a fence is necessary, but some sort of barrier that would outline that this is an RV park and it's not, um, public access. Because I think you're just going to have a lot of issues with people, um, trespassing, especially in the tent camping area. It might be, I just think it would be something worth considering, uh, that would make, provide for a quality experience for everybody in the park. Because there is a lot of foot traffic. We already kind of have a seasonal unofficial RV park in the Samoa Boat Ramp parking lot. Um, and I could just see that kind of bleeding over into the RV park if there isn't some sort of barrier, whether it's a low fence or, you know, it doesn't have to be cyclone or anything super tall, but I would, um, invite you to consider adding that to the project. Another thing I noticed is, um, the placement of the RV pads seems to be in a northwesternly northwest-southeasternly direction. The wind does tend to come from the northwest a lot of the time in that neighborhood. So I think it would be kind of creating a wind tunnel effect between all of the RV stalls if they were fully occupied. So just another thing to consider when, um, designing the layout for this park. So, thank you.
Hello. My name is Denise and I live in the Bridge District as well. And we have been talking about this since two thousand and sixteen. We've already been in front of the planning commission. And what Sari was talking about are the concerns that we brought in when we first understood this project might go through. It was not definite at that point. Um, and Kim Burgel, uh, was good enough when the project was approved to get this meeting together. At this point, uh, we do not trust Mr. Schneider in upkeep or anything like that. The grounds at this point have not been maintained very well. I have called code enforcement to have a futon and a camper shell to be removed. And there's been no action on that, no response via email or anything like that. I agree that there needs to be a barrier and, um, mo- good oversight. Because we move trailers all the time. And if we have to police his trailers, we don't want to be responsible for that. And with the onsite camping, which we weren't in, informed about until we came before the planning commission previously, we have concerns about that. Um, how are they going to be protected? Because there are times now that people are entering camps with knives and taking things. We don't believe that that's safe. We do not agree with that part of this project at all. So thank you for your time. Um, and Mr. Schneider, if you are listening, please take care of the futon and the camper shell. We removed a whole bunch of people who thought they could live there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi there. Chuck Ellsworth here again. Um, live, live in the Bridge District. This is a great project in my opinion, and I think some of the concerns that the neighbors have are, are valid. I think a barrier would be pretty good. Water management issues, um, primarily are from, um, the south, from about Sixth Street down. So a lot of the water that runs into that area has, is not generated by the property there on T Street. This is, I think this will be a really good improvement for the area because, um, I ride my bicycle often, you know, at least three or four times a day or a week, um, by the existing shoreline, uh, uh, RV park. And that place is meticulously maintained. And if this, if this is even half as good as what he does down at the, um, shoreline park, it's going to be terrific for the neighborhood. So I think there's, on, on balance, this is a terrific project for the Bridge District.
Thank you. Um, looks like no one present in the room is coming up. Mr. Schneider, if you would like to make any comment, now would be your chance.
I have no further comments.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? I don't see anyone. Okay. I will bring it back to, uh, the commissioners for motion and discussion. For the purposes of discussion, I'm happy to make the motion if staff can bring it back up, please. I move the planning commission, dot, 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 dot. I believe you.
I move the planning commission adopt a resolution conditionally approving the use permit, coastal development permit and design review for the Schneider RV Park project at fifteen thirty-five Waterfront Drive.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion before vote?
Well, I wanted to make note of some of the comments we got. So there was discussion about, uh, sorry, there was discussion about having some sort of barrier. It wasn't clear to me what parts of the project site, but a barrier of some sort to distinguish it from neighboring land. Also some concern about safety and just the general management and then the orientation of the, the spaces. I think being that there are RV spaces, it doesn't make me quite as nervous. The camping area is somewhat of a strange. I, I don't know if we had anything in our materials that defined out that was going to be operated. It just seems like a kind of open area. But I don't know that it's for us to get that much into the weeds. So the only other thing that was a concern for me is just the interface with the waterfront trail and how that's gonna, when I walked it today, I was trying to imagine having RV spaces along that portion of the shoreline and, and what that experience is going to be for people riding by and walking by. And I'm not sure there's anything we need to do on that front, but I just thought I'd see if anyone else had any ideas about ways to kind of ensure that's a, a well-functioning transition of the edge of the project. So I don't know. Did anyone hear anything that they felt like we needed to address in the conditions?
I, you, uh, Director Costello, I'm sorry, uh, Senior Planner Costellano referenced the landscape plan. Does that do any buffering with the trail?
Yes, it does. Um, right now, um, it looks like, so you know, within fifty feet, it, it will be, the landscaping plan will be approved. But it looks like they have, uh, California Bay berries, a shrub, um, immediately adjacent to the trail. And then there are some, there's a, uh, a Marina strawberry tree in there. Looks like there's some sicah spruces that are going to be planted. So, um, the point of having the landscape plan in this area review, by the way, out of tribe, is to help screen it from Humboldt Bay and Tulawat, which would effectively kind of, you know, even though you're right on the waterfront trail, but there will be vegetation there, um, separating the trail from the RV park.
Yeah, I, um, I don't personally feel the need to further condition this project, but I, uh, agree with some of the comments made by neighbors about, you know, potential security issues. I think it will benefit the developer to consider those as well if they want to make money. So some of those things might sort of develop organically. But I would be totally comfortable making a recommendation, not a, not a condition, but a recommendation that they consider, you know, fencing as part of, part of the design. Something that would be kind of non-imposing, you know, I'm not suggesting anything large, but just something to kind of delineate the space and create a sense of this is in and that is out. Sometimes that's enough of a disincentive for people who shouldn't otherwise be there. And I was wondering if the, um, applicant could speak to the site's ingress and egress. It does look like Front Street would maybe be the primary access, but also coming from the west, would the site just be accessible from that existing paved area under Samoa Bridge? Staff may also speak to that if they prefer.
Yeah, so there, there is no, there's going to be no access from under the bridge. And then I'm sorry, I was kind of, what was the other question about, about the Front Street?
Just what are the, what are the, um, ways to get into the site? Where can you access the site?
Just Front Street. And then as you can see in one of the site plans, the, it looks like they're going to stripe the, um, asphalt to kind of direct traffic. So I think that would help with internal circulation and there'll be full travel with the lanes on Front Street. Travel lanes will be full with travel lanes. And I believe the like turning radius, like that was considered for turning from Front to T Street to make sure the big rigs could turn into it. So seems like with the internal circulation and the improvements to the city streets should be sufficient for, to ensure safe access of vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'd just point out that if we, if, if landscaping is all that serves to define the, the sort of, sorry. There's a parking and kind of public use area underneath the bridge that on a site plan wouldn't really be obvious, but is in fact the case because the bridge is, you know, fifty feet in the air. So that is a public area that has a secondary use at the ground level and distinguishing between that area under, in the Caltrans right-of-way and the property that we're approving development on. I think having some type of barrier, whether it's through landscaping or fencing or would be wise, given that otherwise it's at the same grade for the most part. It would be hard to police very effectively. But I agree with, um, Commissioner Freitas that, you know, we don't necessarily need to condition that. That could be achieved through the landscaping plan on the east side where the lateral vertical access, I guess the vertical access is going. There is an existing fence there that could be replaced that butts up to the security national property. So there is sort of a barrier in place on that property line. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I agree with both Commissioner Lozare and Commissioner Freitas that I, I think those would be good things. I like the way, uh, Commissioner Freitas put it, you know, denoting what's in and what's out. And I also agree that I'm not inclined to add conditions. I think recommendation is the right, uh, approach for that.
Yeah, and if I could clarify, um, fencing in this area, no matter what height it is, is considered development and would require coastal development permit. So, but I think if you make a recommendation, I, I'm just not sure if, if, because we didn't analyze that included in the CDP, if we need to come back for a modification. I think you can recommend it and then I can go back and do some research and, and see, you know, if, if he really does need to modify the CDP to do that. But I just wanted to give that caveat since it wasn't, I, we, we didn't analyze it in the CDP.
Yeah, I think that's well spoken and, uh, I, there are probably multiple ways to get at that delineation. Then some of them won't require additional permitting.
I'm sorry. Is there any provision for something along the lines of minor modifications being approvable by the director to the permit?
Yeah, that, that could be, yeah, that would be something I would need to look into. I mean, I certainly don't want to prevent you from making that recommendation, uh, because I think it personally is a good one as well. After hearing neighbor concerns, but, uh, I just wanted to put the caveat that it might need it, but I'm not sure.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the good thing about a recommendation is they don't, they don't need to do it. So, um, I would be happy to amend my motion if someone would provide a second just to add a formal recommendation into the motion. Unless there are other items anyone would like to add, I would listen to that.
Well, I don't think we need further analysis to allow for a fence. We can approve it and it cannot be there or be there. And just that way they're covered either way and we don't have to kind of come back and revisit it or have additional staff time devoted to it. So.
It's hard to hear.
Oh, sorry. Uh, let me pull this closer. I guess what I was saying is why not just include authorization, not a requirement for fencing? If, or similar barrier and then along the east and western boundaries. And then we just see how they work that out. And if they don't feel like a fence is necessary, they don't have to put it in.
And I could also have the caveat, I think what could actually make that work is the fact that we've already addressed access and that fencing it wouldn't impact existing access since it's getting improved as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
What are the fence standards, uh, in the zone, like height?
Uh, currently, uh, ooh, I think it's accessory str- I think it's, ooh, you know, I'm not sure. Cause it's the coastal zone, it's different than the inland. I think it would just be the same height as an accessory structure and I think that's pretty high. I mean, at least eight feet, right? But I, I think they were thinking of something smaller.
Yeah, cause that's why I'm asking is, you know, I think if we're to attempt to provide approval, it's hard without a design, you know, if we're going to say like anything that falls within the standards. I would personally prefer to see something lower than eight feet. But I mean, I could potentially be talked out of that. So I guess that's where my mind is going. Is do we need to further refine what we would be willing to approve? Are we trying to like design from the dais really kind of like quick here? How, how into the weeds do we want to go on, on this?
I guess I think we could just keep it at a fence and we could dictate the height at maybe six feet and then let that be subject to review and approval by the department, you know? And that way we've achieved the goal of providing approval for potentially distinguishing, differentiating the RV park from the surrounding lands and providing a measure of security and how they design it can be done, you know, with staff and the applicant.
I would also like to add that the city would not like a chain link fence. So if you are going to recommend a fence, if it could not be chain link, because it just doesn't look very nice. And then I know I have heard concerns from the community as well that they are not liking the open aluminum wrought iron fences either, because that looks like a prison.
When I'm imagining that the RV park, you put up a fence and then you're kind of getting rid of that feel of kind of being on the bay. So I do remember discussing this before that the applicant was kind of against having the fence. And I think that the project's going to be naturally delineated by the construction that's being done. So I don't see a reason to make that recommendation, but it's like as a, it's his private business. If he decides it doesn't need a fence and he's going to maintain the property without one, then that's his choice.
My concern is just, it's a pretty thin, if you look at the site plan, it's a pretty thin strip of land that distinguishes the drive lane from some of the RV spaces from the Caltrans right-of.
And you're talking like where the boat house is down there?
Uh, well, I'm talking about just people park underneath the bridge. It's a parking area, even though it's a highway, you know, but it's the lower level of the highway. So it's like, that's kind of a publicly used area that from the ground level perspective, doesn't really, there's no obvious separation between this site and that. You could just kind of.
So your concern is that the public would think that now it's privately owned and operated?
Or just that there wouldn't be anything to stop someone from parking there that might be going to launch their boat and walking onto the RV park because there's not really, it's just vegetation. That's all the way. And it's a very thin amount of it from what I can see from the site plan. So. But I, we're not requiring it as far as the discussion's gone so far. So it's just, it's just that way, if it does become an issue in the future and they do want to put up a fence, they have coverage for it. If they want to try it out for the first couple of years and see if it's a problem, if the vegetation approach works, they could do that. And then it just means that we don't have to revisit it. I think I'm just taking what, uh, Senior Planner Castellano is saying about fencing in the coastal zone requires a coastal permit. If it's not part of the project we approved tonight, might be having to come back to us and why make that happen?
I see. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I think the intent would be, you know, to support the. Yeah, I think the intent would be, you know, to support the applicant in whatever they want to do, but just provide them that option. They can always say, no, thanks, like we really, we don't want that. But that way, if they, if, if the situation, you know, changes and they change their mind, they would not have to go through an expensive and lengthy process to modify that component.
I like all that. I will second whatever friendly mondo emotion you guys come up with.
Do you want to, we'll let that, um, and she could work on an amendment.
And, so is this just gonna be a recommendation, or you're gonna actually like approve them to do a fence whether they want or not? Because if you do, I think I would like you to state that adding the fence to the project would not conflict with the policies of the city's local coastal program as it will not interfere with existing access.
Okay. Uh, okay, bring up that motion, and I'll do my best. Okay. Okay, I move the Planning Commission adopt a resolution conditionally approving the use permit, coastal development permit, and design review for the Schneider RV Park project at fifteen thirty-five Waterfront Drive, and further approve an amendment to the project, um, to include approval of a fence or screen not to exceed six feet in height. And not made of a chain link or wrought iron material. And further, the Planning Commission finds that this project modification would not conflict with existing local coastal program policies as it will not affect access or other policy areas covered under the Coastal Act.
I will second that.
Uh, all in favor?
So, discussion, just a few more seconds. Planner Castellano, is that clearly optional to the applicant, the way we D-Lo wrote it up?
I think so. I mean, my, we're, we're doing a CDP right now. We're adding that additional finding for the fence in your motion. There's a lot of evidence already to back it up in the report that the project itself is not going to, you know, it's consistent with LCP policies, so the biggest one is the coastal access. I mean, there's visual resources, so, uh, I guess also maybe you should amend it to have it be open. Actually, still make sure it's not a solid fence, so I'm sorry, I'm thinking on the fly of the Coastal Act priorities and our LCP, and, you know, visual resources was one of the policies in there, so.
Do you mean open slats?
Yeah, meaning you can see through it, not just a solid, you know, wood fence.
Just to solve that, not include fencing along the shoreline or the southern boundary of the site, just east or west boundaries. That way we're not interrupting a view to the bay.
Yeah.
Then we don't have to worry about whether it's a bake or, or see-through. And I think just inclusion of the word optional.
Yeah, inclusion of the word optional. Do I need to say all of that over again?
I, I've got an optional fence, and I liked everything that you said, and then now we're amending it though to only allow it on the east and west and not the north and south project.
I mean, I feel like that would kind of like ruin the point of the fence in some ways, but.
Or just make it open, so it's not solid.
You'd want the fence on the south side maybe, right? Because that's gonna protect that, that ton area.
Yeah, the way it's oriented, the water is north.
Waterfront Drive is?
Yeah, the water's north, and then the waterfront drive is south.
So just exclude the north side then?
Well, I mean, this is all so academic, it's not like he even wants the fence anyway. I, I think maybe the spacing would be a better solution because it gives him more options. If he wants to not do all four sides, then he wouldn't have to do all four sides. So I think that would be my preference as the motion maker, is to require
Just say it can't be solid. Or just say it can't be solid.
Yeah, not solid. Yep, that would be my preference, if everyone is willing to accept that.
I mean, if we want to get into semantics, you'd be like, it has to be at least fifty percent open or something, but, I mean, I think solid does it.
I have a hammer in my truck, we could.
Yeah, he doesn't want a fence anyways, um, you know, so I think if one was put up, it would probably just be like a you know, to delineate a barrier, not actually keep people in and out, you know?
I'm comfortable.
Yeah, okay. Uh, great, are we ready?
Did, and you, we still have a second?
Still have a second.
Great. Sure. Yes.
And design review for the Schneider RV Park project at fifteen thirty-five Waterfront Drive, and further an amend-
Approve an amendment.
Further approve an amendment.
Of the project to include approval
Of an optional fence or screen not solid and not to be taller than six feet in height.
Because the We can listen to it, but it's the additional findings, because the fence, the project, the fence will not block visual resources to the bay. I'm gonna listen to what you said, I said it earlier nicely, and, um, and, and existing public access is not affected.
And yeah, please do also make sure that the materials, the prohibited materials are captured in the.
And the, the, the no chain link or wrought iron.
Correct, yeah.
You said it very clear earlier, and I think the only change was the not solid.
Then we just went and made it more confusing, but I think we're ready now.
Sure.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Freitas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Indeed. Okay, pressing on to F three, fifteen thirty-five Waterfront Drive Lot Line Adjustment and Street Vacation for the Schneider RV Park.
Yeah, so I'm gonna present that again. Um, let's see here, get pulled up. Oh, I didn't share my screen. Oh, no. Uh-oh, okay, so we just found out that the applicant did want to talk, but he couldn't unmute himself, so.
Eric?
Uh, he, he raised a hand.
Can we just unmute him?
Can we unmute him now? So we can at least discuss here what his comment was.
Does that mean we're reopening a previous item?
Oh, you know, I'm not used to being in this seat, so I'm not quite sure. Um, do we have City Attorney Bob Black on the line? Can you advise us on what we would do, um, if the commission has taken action on an item that the applicant wanted to speak on and wasn't able to?
Uh, yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to I don't see a way of appearing on your screen, but I, I assume you can hear me, is that true?
Yes, we can hear you. Derek, can you, um, un, like let people share their videos?
It, it's okay. If not, um. So, your commission has taken an action. Presumably you could reconsider that action. And I would recommend that you simply open it up for the applicant to make what comment he wished to make, and then decide what to do, uh, after hearing that comment, which may well be nothing. Uh, but if the comment is persuasive, uh, that perhaps the motion in some aspect, uh, should be changed for the public benefit, then you could make a motion to reconsider.
Okay. Okay, thank you, that, um, that sounds great. Uh, looks like Travis unmuted, do you want to bring it back, Chair?
Well, I'm just wondering if the applicant thinks his comment, if he, if he needs to make the comment in regards to the motion already passing, or if it's something he could then discuss during this next.
Or just with staff afterwards, but he is unmuted if he wanted to. Go ahead.
First of all, I just, I just want to say I'm not adverse to the, uh, motion that was approved, okay? I just wanted to provide a little color on the rationale for the fence, um, and some of the logic behind it. I, I agree with some of the things that were said in terms of, uh, its role in terms of protecting not only the people within the park from external factors, but also external people from internal. And so, um, there was definitely some thought given to that in, in various, you know, various levels, okay? As whether it be, you know, wrought iron, chain link, uh, split rail, whatever it may be. Um, and being an owner of a park already on the waterfront trail, um, at one point in time, we were approached about putting a fence between the trail and our existing park. And we gave it, you know, there was a lot of consideration given to it. And ultimately, the decision was made to not install a fence because we did not feel as if it was very welcoming, not only to for our guests to the trail, but also for the trail, you know, to interface with our park. We wanted that, uh, community feel where people could, you know, co-mingle and interact and, and hopefully, you know, that's a very successful feature. It's been met with mixed results. Um, I would say, I tell people this all the time, twenty hours out of the day, I love the fact that we don't have a fence, and we've got, you know, direct interaction with the trail. There's four hours out of the day that it presents a significant problem. And as a result, you know, we've had to hire security just to protect our tenants and their belongings. In this particular case, at this park, uh, you know, we would certainly entertain a fence. Uh, we're not opposed to a fence. Uh, in terms of the material selection, um, I'm not, you know, hell-bent on one material or another. Uh, I do like something though that is, uh, you know, unob, that doesn't obstruct things. I want it to be very unobstructive or invasive, okay? The, the most obvious material for me at this point in time is the black vinyl coated chain link fence, similar to what the city has used, um, uh, along the waterfront trail in various spots. It seems to blend very well with the surroundings. It's also probably the most durable for the conditions. The wrought iron or the wrought iron type that are aluminum or powder coated just don't withstand the, the marine environment there, um, whereas the vinyl coated fence seems to. At the same time, i- it's more of a deterrent, and for lack of a better term, it keeps honest people honest. And fences, as we all know, with some of the tools that are available today, they're, they're easily broken down or, or cut through. So, uh, long story short, uh, I'm not adverse to the motion, I'm not asking anybody to change it. I just wanted you guys to understand that there was a great deal of thought given to, uh, the fencing a- around this facility.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing it to our attention that we didn't see there. Does this hot bearing on the motion? I agree. Okay, we will press on to F three.
Great, thank you. Okay, let me get my notes. Okay, hello again, um, next up, I'm presenting the fifteen thirty-five Waterfront Drive Lot Line Adjustment and Street Vacation for the RV park. Uh, the city is the applicant for the lot line adjustment and the street vacation for this portion of the project to, to create the project site, um, eh, and as described in the staff report, the city and the developer have an agreement for the development of the RV park on the east side of the Samoa Bridge, and for a future mixed-use development on the west side of the Samoa Bridge, uh, which both require separate permitting, and the RV park is, park is proceeding first, like I said last time. So here is a different map of the project location, um, and then I'm gonna do this quickly, so. Here are the existing par, city-owned parcels that are implicated in this project. You can see, uh, existing parcel one is just north of Front Street, and then city parcel two straddles the, uh, State Highway two fifty-five. Uh, so the lot line, and then here's the developer-owned parcel. Here is the proposed, uh, vac, street vacation of portions of S and Front Street. So after the lot line adjustment, it would move the shared lot line right between the blue and the red, the blue over towards the bridge, and then the red, so essentially now the, the two legal parcels would be straddling instead of one legal parcel straddling the bridge. And then after the street vacation, then all the parcels would be mer, well, the resultant parcel one and the vacated portions of the street would be merged with, I, sorry, I didn't highlight the developer parcel to create the project site that you saw in the last presentation. Um, so quickly, the, uh, oh, my, it's, sorry, this is off. Um, the required findings are in chapter one fifty-four of Uricha Municipal Code or subdivision regulations. I do want to point out this lot line adjustment is not, is not exempt development, so it required a CDP, but that analysis was covered in this UP CDP Design Review Report. Um, so the required findings as a grant for a lot line adjustment is a greater number of parcels than originally existed or not created, so this project is just, has two parcels, two parcels will be ending the, the end result. Uh, there is no violations of the municipal code from the lot line adjustment. You know, there's an existing boathouse on one of the parcels, the lot line adjustment is not affecting that. Uh, and there's no other development on the other side of the parcel. Uh, condition one of the lot line adjustment says that it shall not be recorded until the coastal development permit for the entire RV park project is final and effective, and that is because the lot line adjustment required a CDP, so we have to make sure that the CDP is final and effective before the lot line adjustment can be finalized. Uh, next, street vacation analysis. There's two types of street vacations, there's a summary and a general. Uh, the summary is a shortened process when certain, um, conditions are met. And then a general is a longer process. This project does qualify as a summary vacation because those portions of Front and S Street have not been used, or they've been impassable for five years, and no public money has been expended for maintenance. Um, California Government Code six five four oh two requires that before, um, a jurisdiction, a city disposes of, um, or, I'm sorry, vacates a right-of-way, that that vacation has to be in conformity with the general plan. And so in the staff report, it does talk about how the RV park is consistent with the general plan and the LCP, that's the local coastal program. So tonight you would be making a recommendation to the city council to vacate the street, which is needed for access and some of the improvements as part of the project site. As you could see in the previous, um, images, that the streets kind of bisected the, all the parcels involved. And then it will go to city council, the vacation, add a notice, public hearing, another one where the city council would adopt a resolution to vacate. Uh, as I talked about before, SEQA was previously done, um, for the RV park project in two thousand nineteen. Uh, furthermore, the street vacation and lot line adjustment would also qualify for categorical exemption if it was just by themselves um, under the class five fifteen three oh five exemption for minor alterations in land use limitations as described in the staff report, as the parcels are, um, you know, less than twenty feet in slope, and they're not creating more parcels, and it's described in the staff report. So, uh, the recommendation here is to hold a public hearing, and again, adopt a resolution. There's two resolutions, one for the lot line adjustment, one for the street vacation. Um, recommending the city council, oops, summarily vacate the portions of Front and S Streets for the RV Park project. And I raise a motion, but I will stop sharing for your discussion.
I'll make the motion. If you could share your screen again.
Wait, I have to, what to do?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm just so excited.
Don't worry, no, we're gonna get through it. We'll press, we'll press through, I promise. Okay, so, uh, questions for staff?
Yeah, this is maybe semantics, but I was, I was curious about why we need to do a merger? Because it seems like under a lot line adjustment, it can extinguish all underlying parcels, so if we're coming in with twenty-five parcels but coming out with two, it doesn't really matter. So what was the reason for the merge?
So the merge, or the, the lot line adjustment is only between the two city-owned parcels in order to separate what, the one on, to make a parcel on the east side of the bridge for the RV park, so the other par, parcel can go for the other project. This developer has its own parcel as well, and there's the street right-of-ways in between, so.
But couldn't it be a three parcel? But couldn't it be a three parcel lot line adjustment and it just comes out with two?
It could, but it's cleaner this way since, yeah. And the city was the applicant because the city surveyor is working for the city and not the developer. So.
Okay. So because the city property is the only ones being involved in the lot line adjustment, that's why the merger is necessary?
Yeah. And, um, the coastal zoning code has a specific provision in there. I don't remember the code section, but it says all the uses must be within their site. So, uh, we need to have it on one legal parcel, thus the merger at the end of everything after the lot line adjustment and the vacation.
So this, with the vacation procedure, portions of it will go to Mr. Schneider's property and portions of it will go to city on property?
Yeah. So the, yeah, the, right now it's unclear who the underlying owners are, but we suspect it would go from the center line of the street over. So if the, the lot line adjustment happens and it's conveyed to the applicant, now it's in his name. And so now all the, the street underneath it is in his name.
Well, oh yeah, on Front Street, the Arkley property doesn't, isn't affected because Front Street will still be intact.
Correct. Yeah. The street vacation is only going, I believe, 25 feet east of the west line. So that way it starts right where the entrance is, uh, and it won't affect the other private property.
Okay, thanks.
Further questions? Okay. We will open up for a public hearing. Again, you have three minutes if you'd like to make a comment. Do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
I don't see anyone on Zoom, um, unless they, unless the developer wanted to speak again.
If you, if you do want to speak, just raise your hand and then we can get you unmuted.
I, I have no comment.
Thank you. All right. We'll, uh, close the public hearing and bring it back for motion and discussion.
Senior Planner Castellano, would you mind sharing the motion? Thank you. I move the planning commission adopt resolutions conditionally approving the lot line adjustment at 1535 Waterfront Drive and recommending the city council summarily vacate portions of front and S streets for the RV park project.
I'll second my motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Um, it looks like there are not directors reports and communications unless you've added something. I'm not aware of. Okay. That will adjourn a meeting. Great work, everybody.